Hi, everybody. I am Mary O'Dwyer, owner of Mary's Blue Door, where I help you breathe easier, literally and figuratively, because how well you breathe is deeply connected with how you feel.
Lauren Abrams. So Maya Angelou says, "Life is not measured by the number of breaths we take, but the moments that take our breath away." I thought that was a good way to start. But the other thing, in my interview with you, Mary, you talked about how we store our traumas and the times that we go, huh, in our body. And I thought that was so interesting. Even like when we're driving our car and we see something and we, and all of a sudden we go, huh, like that. And it's, and that even gets stored in our body. And I just thought that was all, that was just so interesting, that those are even traumas. So do you want to talk about that a little bit, just briefly?
Yeah, everything that we encounter that's upsetting to us is a trauma. Obviously, there's different levels and layers of trauma. Some are more significant than others, some are more impactful. But we also need to be aware that what might be really traumatic to me, like I might be terrified of heights, and I could get a really big fright, you know, if I'm on the edge of a cliff, let's say, and somebody pretends to, you know, mess with me. But somebody who doesn't have a fear of heights wouldn't have the same trauma. So I think understand, understanding that perspective, that what's traumatic to me might not be traumatic to you and vice versa, helps us then to give grace. Because when we can see, when we can understand, rather, that everybody is walking their own path. And when we understand that we don't know what somebody else has endured in their life, we may look at their life from the outside and see a version of it that to us looks okay and normal. But maybe they have encountered traumas that they haven't shared, or maybe they have encountered obstacles that weren't traumatic to me, but to them were really traumatic. You know, recently in our home, both of our sons have moved off to college. I kind of talked about that and I had to say goodbye to all of my family in Ireland, leave my son there. And it's wonderful and it's fantastic. But my mama's heart was devastated. And my husband couldn't understand for a few days, like, why was I in a funk? Because he was processing that exact same event completely differently to me. And so when we can honor that in ourselves and understand that every, that, that our reaction, whether it's big or small, is appropriate. There is no such thing as an overreaction. If I have a big response to something, that's because there is something within me that's being triggered. And when we have these little traumas, let's say we have a response that maybe we recognize as maybe a little over the top, or maybe realize, hmm, I am really sensitive to that, even though our emotional response in the time was what we were feeling. That is a clue that we have stored a lot of similar trauma in our body. And so let's say each little trauma is like, you know, visualize it like a little disc or something, or a little chip or something, right? And then the more of those that stack up, the easier, the more, um, the more obvious it is, or the easier it is to be triggered. I'm using the wrong words there because I'm seeing it in my brain. It hasn't completely come into words yet. But it's kind of like having a swelling on your body, right? It's really tender when it's, when it's really swelled, right? And so imagine this man has a lot of these discs, is really tender and it's way more sensitive, and it's going to get triggered way more often. And those responses are going to be way over the top. Let's say you have this swelling on, you know, you've had a bruise or you've had some wound or whatever. And now it's on day 10 and the swelling is way down and a lot of the healing has happened. It's not as tender. If you bump it or land on in your sleep, it's not going to be as sensitive as it would have been maybe on day one. So that's kind of how we can also tune in to know how, how much attention that particular trigger or that particular wound needs to, needs to receive. Does that make sense?
It does. So how does breathing help?
How does breathing help? Breathing helps because breath is, you know, in order to resolve any trauma, right? In order to get, get out of any situation, the only way out is through. We have to go through it. And the breath is the journey that helps us. Because when we do that, like we do in the car, when we get a fright, we're, we're using our breath to stop the flow of that emotion so that we can manage it and kind of come to terms with it. And, you know, suppress it, repress it, make a little disc. And if you can visualize that, what I was sharing earlier, you know, we make a little, little place to store it and we insert it in there, you know? So when we go back in with the breath, what we're doing is we're activating, we're stirring the pot. And we're using the breath as a tool to raise the vibration in our body, because the breath is the life force. It's the prana, the chi, the spirit, the Holy Spirit. And we're activating these lower vibrations, these things that we have stored, these old fears, these old wounds, sadness, depression, whatever it is, they're all a lower vibration. That's why they feel a little heavier. And so when we come in and we use the breath therapeutically, or like we're going to do today and try with our little transformational breath session, we're going to be activating some of those wounds, whatever is ready to heal today. Because the breath also has its own wisdom. Because it is the chi, it is the life force, it is the spirit. It has its own intelligence. So we don't need to have an agenda of like, well, I want to deal with this trauma. Or I want to, you know, resolve this one. We might have a general intention. That's always good to know the intention of what we want to feel as an outcome, whether we want to feel more peaceful, more accepting, more allowing, more expansive, more open. It's always come to, good to come up with an intention, but without having an agenda, so to speak. And that's as important for me as a facilitator too, understanding that the breath has its own wisdom. So the breath will activate whatever needs and is ready to resolve today. And so as we work with our breath, you may notice some sensations in your body. And that can, that is just the energy of that wound or that trauma or that old emotion that's been suppressed or repressed, making itself hurt today. So that might feel like heat in the body or coolness in the body, or some tingling in the body, even like heaviness, kind of like you feel like you have a weighted blanket. Or it might feel really light and floaty. You might feel some unusual twitches. You might also feel the resonance of the emotion. So you may feel an old sadness, you may have a memory, you may have a recollection of an incident or a person from your past that might have been a trigger or somehow associated. So if any of those things come up, just trust it's part of the process. It might, it, it, it could feel a little unusual, but know that it's very common when we're doing this work. So I'll be here, you know, talking you through it, guiding you to just breathe as any of these things come up. And if anything is overwhelming, because that can happen sometimes, you know, we feel like too hot and all clammy and now it's hard to stay with our breath. And then we can use our voice to move that emotion. So sometimes you might hear me coach everyone, like, let's make a tone together. Ahhh, and that's just a way of intentionally working with our voice to assist the breath and moving that energy. And when we do that, what we're doing with the breath and with the tone, if needed, is we're allowing that emotion to go through whatever arc it would have gone had we allowed it in that moment when we felt the fear or the anger or the depression and we went, huh, and we held it. Because it's, I think I shared in our podcast, it's like when you feel that nervousness getting on a roller coaster, right? You're all nervous, you're all nervous, you're all nervous. I'm speaking for myself, maybe not for everybody. But I think we can all maybe remember a spot where we were really nervous about doing something, but we had to go through with it. And then as you went through it, well, we have to breathe because there's, you know, you've really, no option, right? I'm in the, I'm on the roller coaster now, I'm going up. I have to breathe. And as I breathe into that nervousness, or let's say you're going on stage or you're coming onto Lauren's podcast and you're feeling nervous, take some breaths. And then that nervousness turns into excitement and exhilaration, right? And so, because that's the natural arc of that. Or maybe an old anger, it's kind of like in life, right? We can be really angry with a spouse or with a child when they do something that, you know, triggers us or upsets us. But then over time, we come to terms with it. That's a word that we often use. We resolve it maybe with dialogue or just with time and all of that. And it might take, you know, weeks or months or years sometimes to come to a place of feeling acceptance or feeling like we can let it go. Well, imagine doing that in a breath session and just doing it in two or three minutes. Let's skip that, skip that whole like years-long process. And let's fast track it. And, and that's what happens when we work with our breath. And it's, it's magical, it's powerful. And when we then let go of some of this heaviness that we've been holding, it's so much easier to connect with that light inside of us, that lightness inside of us, whatever it is that you have faith in, you know, be it the angels, God, source, spirit, the universe. It's so much easier to access when we have worked with the breath and gotten into a state of relaxation, gotten into a state where we have like go of some things that have been weighing us down.
Okay, that's great. So should we do it? Should we start?
I, I don't see why not. So how long, it's about 10 hours, how much time do we have? And I'll just kind of-
Well, how long does the breath work take?
Okay, well, we can do 10 or 15 minutes, we can do 30 minutes. But I think 10 or 15 minutes might be good to start.
I think 10 or 15 is good. I know you wanted everyone to have a space to sit or lie down. Is that right?
If possible, yes, that would be great. And you don't want to do this standing up.
Or driving a car.
Are driving your car, definitely not. We do not breathe and drive. So if you are somewhere where you can't lay down or sit right now, then just, you know, don't follow my breathing cues. Just listen in and come back later on this afternoon or tonight when you can and re-listen. It's going to be on Lauren's group, so you'll be able to-
Yeah, so live there.
Yeah, live there. So you can come back and replay, so. Okay, so Lauren, you're gonna-
I'm gonna sit on the floor, so I'll come back.
Perfect, perfect. So I'm just gonna let everybody take a minute to- Oh, I can hear echo now. So you might have to mute. Yeah, there you go, Lauren, perfect. Okay, so just take a moment to settle in wherever you are. If you're in a chair, make sure that your feet are solidly placed on the ground. If they're kind of dangling a little bit, find a cushion or a little stool nearby that you can put your feet on so that they're solid. You know, you've got a foundation underneath your feet. If you're laying on the ground or on your couch or on a yoga mat, check in with your body and just notice, do you need any support anywhere? Do you want a little support underneath your knees? Do you want a little support underneath your neck? Maybe a small pillow? So just get comfortable. And then we're just going to, together, we're just going to take a deep breath, a cleansing breath. We're going to take three of them. And it's going to be in through the nose and out through the mouth. And this is just going to be to kind of let go of the day, let go of what you have got going on this afternoon, after this, letting go of the to-do lists, letting go of the argument you just had with somebody, letting go of that email that you just responded to. So let's do that together. Breathing in through the nose and exhale, out through the mouth. Again, in through the nose and out through the mouth. In through the nose and out through the mouth. And now what I want you to do is I want you as best as you can to start breathing in and out through your mouth. It's going to be new. Breathing in and out through your mouth as best as you can without any pauses. So you want to open your mouth a little bit so that if you needed to, you could easily put a finger between your upper and your lower jaw. You don't want it open so wide that your jaw is strained in any way. And then you're going to eliminate any pauses that there are between when you take your inhale and when you take your exhale. This particular tool of transformational breath, it's a connected breath. So we're breathing in, breathing out with no pauses. We're not breathing faster. It's going to be a temptation to speed up your breath and you don't need to. That's going to lead to you getting lightheaded and hyperventilating. That is not what we're here to do. So a nice pace to tune into is to give a count of three or four on your inhale and a count of about two on your exhale. So imagine inhale, two, three, four, and then just exhale. Let it go like a sigh. Inhale, two, three, four, and let it go. Inhale, one, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two. And I'm breathing kind of loud, just so that you can hear me. You don't need to breathe loud. Doesn't even matter if the breaths aren't particularly deep right now. That's okay. We're looking for that rhythm of breathing in and breathing out with no pauses. As you're doing that, I want you to put a hand on your low belly, which means below your belly button. So a good way to do this is to kind of place your hand so that your thumbs are at your belly button and your palms are laying on your tummy below the belly button. And just notice what's happening to your belly on the inhale. Is there a natural rise of the belly on the inhale and a fall on the exhale? We don't want to be using our abdominal muscles for this. So it's really just a natural rise and a natural fall. Because as we're inhaling and activating the diaphragm, the diaphragm is moving the abdominal organs out of the way. And that's what's causing the diaphragm to appear like it's, or the abdomen to appear like it's rising. But there's only a very small amount of rise on that inhale. If you're laying down, I want you to just bend your knees and plant your feet on the ground. And that's actually going to relax your pelvic girdle and that's going to allow a lot more breath to come in. If you're sitting in the chair and you're noticing not a lot of breath going into your belly, find a position where you can hug your knees into your chest. And again, that's just another little trick to start to activate that diaphragm. Because a lot of us aren't using our diaphragm. Maybe we haven't been for a little while. You can also open your mouth just a little bit more. And that's going to allow more breath to come in. And again, that's going to make it a little easier to trigger that diaphragm and get it moving and working. So these are the three basics. We've breath in our belly. We've breath that's connected. And we're making our exhale a little longer than the exhale. The exhale is just falling away, really soft and easy. That's just the diaphragm relaxing. That inhale, as we're breathing in, represents bringing in all of our good, bringing in that life force, the chi, the prana. So you can silently affirm in your mind, I love to breathe, I am worthy and deserving of all of my good. I am enough, just as I am. Knowing that that in-breath represents that good, represents that you are worthy. And then that exhale just represents surrender, letting go. Why is it so easy for me to let go? I love to let go of all I no longer need. It's as simple as throwing away the trash. We don't need to go through it. We don't need to examine it. Just let it go. So now that we've got some breath in our belly, we've got the breath connected and we've got the exhale relaxed, we want to see if there's some flow to the chest. So maybe you can keep one hand on your belly and one hand on your chest. And just notice if there's flow to the chest. If you're sitting up, there probably is. It's kind of easy to access when we're sitting up. But if there's only a very little- You can just lean forward a little bit, kind of tuck in your chin. I think you may have lost my signal for a second there, but just keep breathing. If you're laying down and there's very little flow to your chest, just sit up. Find a wall to lean against, find a piece of furniture to lean against. I would recommend that you get some support behind your back if you have been laying down and need to sit up. If you're in bed, you can just prop some pillows behind you. Now, if, as we do this, you're just really finding that it's really hard for you, that you're really not finding it easy to get breath in the belly, no matter if you followed my suggestions or not, then just lay on your tummy. You can lay on the ground on your tummy, kind of put your arms cactus style, like goalposts, making a T with your elbows. And that's going to keep your heart open and just turn your head to one side or the other. And just laying on the ground or on your bed or on your mat or on your couch is going to activate that diaphragm. So by now, some of you might be feeling some sensations in your body. You might be feeling some energy in your head. You might be feeling, some people feel a little bit lightheaded if they haven't done this connected breath work before. If you're feeling super lightheaded, slow the breath down if it needs to. Make sure that that inhale is longer than the exhale. But something else that we can do, if you're feeling any other sensations that are maybe starting to overwhelm or distract you from your breath, is you can just make a gentle tone. So you can just tone with me. We're gonna do two more like that. So inhale and exhale. And one more time. And then just coming right back to your breath. Maybe placing your hands once again on your low belly, connecting with that deep belly breath. Checking that your breath is connected. If there's any pauses, just eliminating them. Knowing that those pauses sometimes represent us holding back. If there's a pause before our exhale, sometimes it means we're just holding on a little bit. We're afraid to let go, there's a little fear of letting go. Maybe we have some stuff that's been carried around for so long. It's become part of us, we're super familiar with it. So by letting go with the exhale sooner, we're letting our body and our subconscious mind that it's okay to let go. If there's a little pause before your inhale, that can represent a little fear of accepting all of our good. Sometimes we might be afraid that we will take from others if we receive all our good, or maybe that we're not worthy, or that we're not deserving. So again, by just breathing in immediately, as soon as we've exhaled, we're sending that message to the universe, sending that message to our subconscious that we are worthy, that we are deserving, and that there is enough for everyone. Because no matter how many breaths you take, there's still plenty of breaths for everybody else, plenty of oxygen for everybody else. And no way are you taking from anybody by taking a breath as soon as you need to. And we're just going to breathe like this with our breath connected for another minute or two. And then we're going to slow it down. And we'll do a guided meditation. So just staying with your breath. Or if you're feeling any of that energy in your body, that heat or that cold or any discomfort or any unusual sensations that are bothering you a little bit, again, just using your voice, make that tone. You can even add a little body movement if you want. Move your arms, move your legs. Use, use that movement to help dissipate and move that energy. And giving thanks for all that is coming up. Knowing that it is a healing that you are receiving today. Firming, I love to breathe. Breathing is easy. Breathing feels so, so good. Now staying, sitting or laying, allow your breath to slow down. Allow your breath to just go to its own natural rhythm. As we just take these next two or three minutes to integrate all that has happened in the past few minutes. Noticing how easy it is to just allow the breath. I don't have to effort. I don't have to do anything. Just simply allow the breath to flow in and flow out. If you are able, placing a hand on your heart. Tuning into your heart, your beautiful heart space. Giving thanks for all that you have received today. The gift of this short breathing exercise, the gift that you have received from spirit. The gift of you showing up here today. And allowing this gratitude, this appreciation that you feel to ripple out from your heart space. Allow that gratitude to be felt all the way down to your tippy-tippy toes, all the way up to the crown of your head. And then allowing this gratitude to ripple out throughout your energy field, throughout the room that you're in. Sending this gratitude out to your home, your office building, the block that you're on, to your entire community. Seeing the waves of this gratitude and appreciation just rippling out, picking up momentum as it spreads out to your city, your county, your state, your country. Rippling out through the oceans, extending beyond the borders of your country. Seeing this waves of this gratitude rippling out throughout the entire planet. And allowing yourself to feel how good it feels to give and receive that gratitude. Knowing that you are sending it out and receiving it from your fellow breathers here today. And now with your next few breaths, start to bring in gentle movement. Wiggling fingers and toes. Be gentle with yourself, don't move too quick. Rotate your ankles, your wrists maybe, get some yeses, get some no's. If your knees are bent and you're laying on your back, just windshield viper your knees. It's going to gently weaken the spine back up. Get up some good morning stretches. Point those toes, point those fingers. And if you've had your eyes closed, which I hope you've had, I forgot to say that, but hopefully you got to relax and close your eyes anyhow. You've got the telepathic message. And gently open your eyes. And it's always good to come back and use your voice. And I like to be dorky and say, I'm alive, I'm awake, and I feel great every time I breathe. So join me in that one more time. I'm alive, I'm awake, and I feel great. I'm alive, I'm awake and I feel great. All right.
Yay. So that was great. Yay. So what I'd really like is for people to put any comments in the group. And if you have any questions, put those in. And if there's any other modalities you'd like to see or any problems you'd like to see solved in particular, put that in there as well. And Mary, of course, is available, all of her links on the website or you can just put it in the website, um, I mean, on the Facebook page. Um, because she has access to that too. So.
Yeah, I'll be sure to.
That was so great.
But yeah, yeah. How did you like it, Lauren?
Oh, it was so great. I love breath work.
It's, yeah, it's the best. It's my favorite.
Yeah, it's, it's easy. You don't have to do anything but breathe.
You don't have to do anything, you can do it anywhere, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do it in your car. A great place to do it is in your car when you're coming home from work. If you need to change your gears, change your brain, turn off the work brain, kinda get into family mode or likewise going to work. Sit in your car in the parking lot, five minutes, three minutes even.
Yeah, a couple people, they told me they really liked using a couple of your techniques from the episode to fall asleep. They've been using those, yeah. So I, I heard they really liked that. So anything that can help fall asleep or keep us asleep, yeah, that's so great. It's so good for our health. So, and I mean, this is great. And by the way, your connection didn't go, you were on here the whole time.
Oh, awesome, because my, my camera went out. At one point I saw like the, the screen went black and the little thing came on just for maybe two or three seconds. So I'm glad you could hear me the whole time.
Yeah, I could hear you, but my eyes were closed, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. I can't imagine anybody's weren't. So, yeah, I thought that was great. Is there anything you wanna add or that listeners should know? Because this is gonna live on there, anybody can come in and revisit this.
You know, just take the step, even if you, if you can't do the full connect breath, don't worry about doing it right, okay? So I'm sure there's a lot of listeners that are just like me, the A-type overachievers, am I doing it right? Let that go. Don't worry about doing it right. As long as you're somehow engaging with your breath, you're engaging with the life force. We're not learning anything new, we are remembering how to breathe. Because this is the way we came into the world. You know, breathing, we breathe in and out with no pauses. So and when stuff comes up, you know, when you get that ache, that you're like, well, I didn't do anything. Why is my back at me? Tune into your breath, breathe into that area. You know, I'll do it in my imagination, I will literally, you know, I've got a pain in my leg and I will breathe and I will visualize as if the breath is going into that area.
I do the exact same thing.
Yeah, yeah. And so, because you're bringing the life force energy into that area of the body. So this can be used in so many ways. Obviously, you know, there's the, the formal transformational breath sessions, but you can just use it in the moment. You have, take the, write something around your desk, take three breaths so that when someone triggers you or you get an email that you're like, oh my gosh, I can't believe it, before you answer, take three deep breaths, it's gonna be a nice reset button. Um, and then the other thing I wanna say is, thank you, Lauren. It has been so wonderful. I've listened to a number of your episodes on your show and it is such a joy and you are so uplifting. And I really hope that everybody that's here in the group is a regular listener and not just regularly listening, but sharing your podcast because you have so many fantastic guests and so many of us um, are in need of little pick-me-ups. And that's what your, that's what your show is, it's a pick-me-up. It's a wonderful, joyful, pick-me-up, but with a, with a, with a, you know, some, some poof to it. Not a poof, but um, what's the, pow, that's the word I was looking for. It's got that pow to it because you're gonna walk away with a little nugget. So just for all your, everybody that's here, I really can't say, say that enough.
Oh, thank you. I love that. And when you talk about taking that breath first, God is in the pause. Taking that breath. I think women have a harder time with that, but that might not be true.
Well, we're learning, right? We can unlearn that, yes.
You are a great example. I love talking about you. All my friends love your, your episode, so.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad they resonated.
Yeah, if anybody hasn't listened to Mary, they need to go and listen to her episode besides just this breathing, uh, breathwork session, which you can do again and again.
Yes, you can do it again.
They should definitely listen to Mary O'Dwyer. So thank you so much for doing this with us today.
You're so welcome. It was so fun. And I will post the links in the chat. And if anybody wants a, a personal assessment of what's going on with their breath, like, what is the breath in my chest, is the breath in my belly, what's going on? What is that telling? Um, you know, I'll put that link in the, in the chat too, so you can schedule that. And that's complimentary, that's my gift to, uh, to you and your listeners.
I love that. Thank you so much.
All right, have a fantastic day. It's been so fun.
Thanks.